Good morning. We're about to start. Just wanted to welcome all of you for being here this morning. I will go through some housekeeping items before we get started. I want to congratulate our City 14 because if you notice, there's not a whole bunch of cables and cameras all around. We have a great system that mimics the one that we have over at City Hall. And because of that, I'm going to ask every single council member to please, when you speak, to try to make sure that you talk to your microphone so that the communication gets through to the people at home. And then in addition to that, if somebody wants to make sure that they want to see what the cameras are doing, if you look at the back of the room, there's a screen back there and you can kind of see what's happening and what people at home are watching.
Assuming somebody is watching.
It is pretty early.
I'm sure that nobody would like to be anywhere else other than here right now, right?
It's the reruns, you know.
Exactly. No, it's, I just want to say thank you to all the fellow council members and the staff for being here so early on a morning on a Saturday. I know that it is a challenge, but it's part of the sacrifice that we do as public servants. Not only us council members, but also the staff, that this is a weekend day for them and they are all here. So just want to say thank you to the department heads and everybody that's here today for your sacrifice. Just a bit of an overview before we have the meeting call to order, just wanted to let everybody at home know that we're excited to start off this budget. I will start by saying that there is no mill levy increase. So if that's what you were waiting for, you could go home. The staff has worked arduously this whole year to take a look at efficiencies and to take a look at how we can make our city a better place for all of you. And as part of that, we will go today through some highlights. I am not going to get into that because our budget manager is going to do that. But just wanted to, again, tell you about a few things that we're going to do in the meeting. So as an old facilitator, I know that teaching adults and working with adults is something that you have people for three hours in a meeting and it kind of gets a little tense or you kind of find yourself trying to find something to do. At your tables, you will find it. Everybody has Play-Doh in their hand, at their access. So if you feel like you are getting a little bit tense or if you feel like you need to do something tactile, there's Play-Doh. I sure know that I will be using it at some points when I'm listening to the presentation. Sorry, City Manager, if you didn't have one, I'd be happy to share mine with you in half. The other thing that we would like to do this year is that there's, there's some times in the meeting that we are having a lot of questions that go a little bit deeper than what we're used to. So again, these are facilitator tools. Tell me if you don't like them for the next meeting, but I want for all of us to be able to say parking lot at any point in time in the meeting. So it's not just going to be me saying parking lot. I think that all of us are adults and if we feel that we're getting into a deep discussion that may be needing some additional information that we feel like staff can provide, not only to us, but put up on the website, if we say parking lot, we have staff that is going to get up, they're going to write down the item that's going to be parking lotted and we will come back to it. And then finally, I just want to say to the public that this has been, seeing us here today really is not a reflection of the budget starts today. This has been a very long process.
Look forward to it. Ready to go.
City Manager.
Thank you. So excellent introduction. I think the, you hit on the two key points. Number one is that there has been a tremendous amount of effort on the part of the staff to prep for this effort. And when we talk about that, we really talk about this concept of continual improvement that we've tried to apply to the way in which the city operates. And we go back and we actually looked at last year's budget meetings. We've asked questions of ourselves as how could we do it better? And I think that what you're going to see hopefully is the output of that, of a, of a process which is, A, operationally focused on best practices, but also reflects how this body operates and anticipate what your questions, what your needs are. And so hopefully this is a very good, seamless and intuitive process as we go forward. Secondly, I think it's very important to understand that, that we understand where we're at from a financial position. We've looked very closely at the revenues. I think we do a phenomenal job at projecting revenues within this organization. And if anything, we're a little bit too conservative and we end up with fairly significant cash flow, our cash reserves at the end of the year that we're able to either add to the fund balances or, as we did this last year, invested into very important deferred maintenance projects. But we are, we work very diligently to make sure that we bring to this body.
Looking at here, at our documents, and we start talking about priorities months before we even come here. We're analyzing, we have a full-time budget person that is analyzing our expenditures, that is analyzing our revenue streams, that is working on all of this. Then after that, council gets together and we all decide on priorities. This year, if you take a look at the book for the council members and for all of you at home, if you go to www.tpeka.org/budget, you will have the same access that council members have to the book.
Impacts this year and future impacts in the future, going forward.
Please.
Mr. Gerber. Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I start talking about this, I'll just say, it's amazing to hear the excitement in everyone's voice. Deputy Mayor, you really set the tone this morning. This is an exciting time, even after 20 years of doing budgets. This is, this is really the best time of the year because it's when we're going to figure out how we're going to impact our citizens for the upcoming year, how we're going to touch their lives and how we're going to make an impact on our city moving forward. So we're excited to be here. Talking about the tax-led legislation, there's been a lot of talk about that across the state and we've had some discussions with council about that as well. The first thing I would point to, you have a handout in front of you and that was prepared by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Not sure which staff member did it, whether Eric did it himself or Eric Smith perhaps might have done it, but it's a, it's a well-done document. It's comprehensive and rather than reinvent the wheel, we decided to put that in front of you and it kind of lays out what I'm going to walk through. The first point I would hit is that there's been some confusion after the late in the legislative session this year, they made some changes. One of those was the implementation date of January 1st, 2017. That's caused a little bit of confusion across the state and even among staffs. That implementation date is January 1st, 2017, but that means budgets adopted after that date. So the confusion was whether or not this particular budget, which is for FY 2017, January 17 to December 17, whether the tax lid is impacted by the budget we're talking about today and in the subsequent weeks. The tax lid does not impact that budget. Not to say that's not on our, it's on our mind, it's on your mind, but we are not officially operating under the tax lid until after the beginning of the year. The other significant change that came out of the legislative session was we went from a five-year or a one-year average of the CIP, CPI, to a five-year rolling average. So that was a significant positive benefit for cities across, cities and counties across the state. So now we're able to rely on a five-year CPI average or rolling average as opposed to the previous one year. I believe we put some numbers in your budget as to what that average has been. It's fairly low at this point, yes.
Mr. Gerber, could you explain for the folks at home what the Consumer Price Index is?
Sure. The CPI is done by the Bureau of Labor Statistics and it's a national average that sort of tries to encapsulate how the economy is doing nationwide. There's a national CPI and then there's a regional CPI, like for example, the Kansas City Metro area has a CPI. And it's just a factor of consumable goods, like, you know, they take some very specific things like this type of apple costs this much now and a year ago or a year previous it costed this much. And then they, they do a comparison. They compare household durable goods, they compare gasoline, heating costs. I didn't really, I don't totally remember all the factors, but there's a number of factors that they compare. And then they just, they do an index of the previous year to the current year and how much the economy is expanding or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the, the other point I think I would want to clarify today is that the tax lid does not prohibit cities from doing a mill levy increase. There's no prohibition against that. What the tax lid does is it requires cities and counties to follow certain steps if they want to do that. And specifically, if you want to raise your mill levy more than the five-year rolling CPI average, then you have to have a special election. So you can do that a number of ways. I won't bore you with the details, but it can be a special election. It can be at the next regular election in August or November, or it can be a mail-in election. So there are options if, if moving forward, this, this policy body ever decides that they'd like to do that. The other thing I'd point out on here is that there's a number of exemptions in the tax lid, which I think are also generally beneficial for cities, whether it's on the revenue or the expenditure side. The biggest among those is the exemption for public safety. So any increases in city budgets, county budgets that relate to public safety specifically do not count against your tax lid increase. So with that, I would summarize by saying that this is not an ideal scenario for most cities, but it is what it is and we're perfectly capable of working within it and working with you to make sure we craft the best budget under the guidelines of this new law. And I'd stand for questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the council? Mayor will guess.
Thank you. I would suggest that during the year, we, as we develop our budget, that we look at it as if there were a, the tax lid was in effect this year so that perhaps by the end of this year or by fall, we could see, started that, that process of what it's like to have the tax lid in effect. Does that make sense? So that we can, you know, if it were in effect this year, what effect would it have? How are the exemptions working, et cetera? So my thinking is it'd be good to have that experience so that we go into next year when it is in effect, we know better how, what the, what the differences will be that we have to take into consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I think even by the end of this budget process, we could probably provide you with something that, that speaks to that very subject, how, if we were under the tax lid, how this might look.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the body? Comments? Okay. Moving forward, we're now going to enter into the budget overview portion of this. Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, just as a point of housekeeping, we, we may want to adopt the, approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Absolutely. We have in front of us and we have received the minutes of the last meeting of last year. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Mr. Jensen moves. Mr. Cohen seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we would move into the detail of the budget overview and for that, we will call on our budget manager, Nikki Lee.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning for being, thank you for being here so early, to you and all of the staff. So first of all, you have a few handouts in front of you. Just want to call attention to those so you can make sure to know what they are. On the top, of course, you have the agenda and the minutes. Right underneath that should have been the overview of the tax lid that Mr. Gerber just walked through. Underneath that, and arguably where we will spend the most time today, you'll see a large legal-sized piece of paper with colors and lines. What that is, this is page 10 of the budget book, which highlights the significant changes to the general fund, but it's got notes to the side and it's a little bit larger so that you can write on this a little bit easier. And so that way you're not flipping around your book as much. I thought it'd be a lot easier to have a handout. So that is right in front of you. And then right underneath that, we have a pile of, you'd see on the top, it says Executive Department Summary Reports. So last year, we had a meeting in June, especially to benefit some of the newer council members that really dove into departments. So not just their budgets, but what do we do, kind of give an overview of operations. And we decided this year that there was some really helpful information provided at that meeting. So for now, what we've done is provided, we had each department put together a handout, kind of highlighting their department. And we said, try to focus on things not in the budget book. Don't repeat what you've already got. This one isn't necessarily about the numbers. It's more about the stats and kind of what's new. What are you working on this year? So I know we just gave this to you today, so we don't expect that, you know, you'll, obviously you're not going to read them during the meeting, but if you go back and read them after this and have questions for the next meeting, we can certainly draw more attention to those, but that's what you've got in front of you. Okay, so just quickly, wanted to touch on the actual format of the budget book. What you've got in front of you, as was stated before, is actually posted online as well and also pretty exciting, it's on the budget portal. So for you all and for members of the, of the public that would like to kind of dive in from the portal perspective, so kind of clicking into the expenditures with a website format rather than a PDF that has been loaded to our website, you can get there from the homepage, you can get there from our budget page, or just budget.tpeka.org. I would say that one focuses more on the numbers in a more interactive way and the budget book kind of gives you more of the story. So to me, it's important to look at them both, but the budget portal is a really, really cool way, very easy to access from a phone for people to kind of get introduced and start to figure out where their questions and interests are. So the budget book in front of you, as was stated, we have been working on this budget process for, I mean, really a year. As soon as you finish the, the last year's budget, you start talking about the CIP, which you all adopted back in April. After this meeting, there will be a series of two more budget committee meetings, which will highlight at the end of this meeting what the next meeting will be focusing on. So the goal would be that by the 28th, which is the third budget committee meeting, we might be at a point to consider any amendments if necessary and then also to approve the budget to the larger governing bodies so that you all approve it so that it can go to the council meeting. And the reason for that timing is that on July 12th, the last of your meetings in July, that's when we need to set the public hearing and the maximum taxes levy. So that's a state requirement that before we get to the budget adoption in August, you all set the public hearing and then you also have to say, our taxes will go no more than X amount of expenditures. That doesn't mean that something can't be changed with budget adoption in August, but the reason you set that then is so that then it's published along with the notice of the public hearings so that everybody is familiar with that. So just a quick overview of your book. Behind the introduction section of the book in front of you, there is some kind of background information, first of all, and very importantly is the city manager's level, which hits on a lot of the themes. And it also calls attention to, a lot of the items we'll be talking about that speak specifically to your budget priorities. So that's a pretty good narrative of what's in the book. Also call attention to on page eight is the budget calendar. This is also on the website. So this one does line out what I just walked through really quickly, the budget committee meetings and kind of the next steps with the budget. Pages nine and 11 are probably the most important items in this budget document and these are the overall expenditure and revenue summaries. So ultimately, at the end of the day, you all approving, are approving the maximum expenditure authority with this budget. So what you see on front of you on page nine, eventually that's what will be on the state forms that we officially send to the state and say, we will spend no more than X amount. So this is kind of what brings it all together. And then just really quickly, wanted to walk through the format and the setup of all of the department pages. So if you'd like to turn, for example, to finance, which starts on page 25, the way that each department section is set up is that we've got a summary of the overall expenditures. We explain what fund those are all paid for. So for example, the finance department is all supported by the general fund, but we have many other departments. For example, Public Works that has multiple funding sources. There's a description by division of all of the different units within that department, the FTE count. There's a historical FTE count, so from the past three years and then this additional year, it explains where the FTEs have been and how they've changed. An organizational chart. And then finally, for example, on page 27 is the detailed line item of that budget. So you've got two years of, of actuals, so what we actually spent, one years of 2016 budget, next to 2017, and then the variance column so that you can easily look at that department and see where the changes were. So what we will be focusing on today and focusing on the general fund are the largest changes to the budget. That's really where I think the time is best spent is to talk about overall in this budget, where have the biggest changes been? So what we'll do is we'll walk through that large handout that you have in front of you, which really, pretty much every department is, is mentioned on that handout. So we'll pretty much get to all of the biggest areas in the budget just naturally by going through that handout. So the goal would be to get through that today and then follow up, if we have any items that go over past our 11 o'clock, then we can continue with the next meeting. So any questions before we get into some detail? Everybody can pull out their large sheet here. And for the public and people behind me, this is page 10 of the budget book. So the way this is organized is this is organized by expenditure categories. So when we look at expenditures, we look at personnel, we look at contractuals, commodities and capital outlay. So this is organized from the largest changes to the smallest changes by category and then the changes on the revenue on the bottom. So the first two items on this list, as long as I've been here, I've been always the first two biggest changes to the budget. And that is full-time salaries and our contribution to health insurance. So the way that we always start the budget year is we first stop and we say, doing nothing else, what do we have to do with this budget? And as you can imagine, there's always, from the beginning, more to every budget year standing still. So if we change nothing else and we simply obligate our contracts and do what we need to on the health insurance side, we're going into the year already knowing that we have an increase to the budget. So first of all, full-time salaries. What this is, is this is all full-time salaries for all departments combined into one, one line item. And as you can see, 2017 over 16, that increases 1.4 million. This is pretty standard, looking back at the last couple of years. It goes up at least a million every year, at least it has for the past couple of years. And what that reflects is, that does include any new positions built into the budget. So we've got documents in here and given some of you guys a preview about the new FTEs in the budget. Of those, six of those are in the general fund and actually technically, two of those in the public works department are also, the costs are shared by other departments. So in total, there are six new positions that touch the general fund in some way, shape or form. And I can get into those in a minute. That also does include, it's a total of 3% increase for management and executive. What that reflects is a 2% cost of living increase, which is consistent with the increase that we had last year. And then that also includes a 1% merit pool. So that's something that we are trying to do better, that we haven't been doing for the past couple of years, is address performance and merit. So we've set some dollars aside to be able to specifically focus them on high performers in the city. And then also, the majority of that increase speaks to the increases in the contracts. So for example, the IFF, the fire contract, and the FOP, the police contract that you all saw, really over the last six months, we've been going through all those negotiations. And in those negotiations, we present what the impact would be if that, if that contract is approved. And so then this reflects all of those increases in all of those approved contracts. And then one other that we did want to address that's included in here would be compensation for the governing body as well.
Deputy Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Gerber.
During our budget one-on-ones, a number of council members raised the issue of what it might take to look at governing body salaries for the council and the mayor. And so we thought we would, since we're talking about compensation and personnel costs, we thought we would raise that issue right now and give the governing body time to put some thought to that so that maybe by the time we get to the, our last budget meeting, if there's an interest from the collective, that there might be then some consensus on what that number might be. The first step in that process, if there is an interest, is to raise it here and to make sure it gets into the budget. And then subsequently, it would need to be in, sent to the council for actual action via an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber. To the council body, do we have comments? I see Ms. Clear.
So is this something we talk about now or do we just go over this paper and then talk about that?
I think that at this point in time, it's been brought up for discussion of the council body and I would welcome comments of council members and the mayor, of course.
I think, I have had some constituents call me and say, you guys don't, you do so much and you don't make enough. And that started, that started me thinking, huh, I wonder if that's true. I mean, I know, I know we do a lot, especially those without jobs. I see the mayor everywhere, see Hillary everywhere. They're always on. The rest of us, I know we have meetings. Now, doing the math, this is my math, someone needs to redo my math. I figured out we make like $9 an hour. I don't know if there's anyone out there that would think that was enough. And I know we're not in it for the money. I know we're, we just want to be public servants, but at the same time, when was the last time there was a raise for the council?
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Clear, that the last adjustment to that was in 2005. And just by way of further clarification right now, I'm sure everyone's aware, but it's $10,000 for city council members and $20,000 a year for the mayor.
And do you know how that goes along with other cities? I know we're above some and below some. Do you know?
Councilman, we, we can certainly look into that. So again, maybe by the last meeting, we would have some better numbers for you. We don't have any, any direct comparisons right now, but I think you're right on that we're above some and below some.
But there isn't an ordinance or anything that says every few years, you look at the council's pay. Does this just come up because someone brings it up?
Correct.
City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of years ago, we went through the process where we had the citizen review committee that made certain suggestions. We're talking about many of those during the council items. One of the suggestions that was made. One of the suggestions that, that was made was that we did look at, at the compensation for the elected officials. So this is consistent with that activity also.
Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you. Yes, it was raised in 2005 and at 2005, I think they were getting 250 a month. I personally will not ask for a raise. I will let the citizens take it to vote and say if they want me to have a raise. Because I think sometimes, and I understand, I, my calculations are 50 cents an hour. And I understand where everybody's coming from, but I think sometimes people feel like we make too much money. So my support on this would be to take it to the people and let them vote on it like they did last time to vote for us. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is always a delicate issue and no matter what elected body that you serve. And I know a lot of different elected bodies choose to tie it with the CPI that we just talked about a little bit earlier. And so I would like to see if that could be researched, if there are cities that do tie their elected bodies, their salaries and stuff to a CPI index that increases or decreases. So if we could do that, it really, I know those bodies that do that, whether it's legislatures or even Congress, that it takes it out of your hands then of having to vote for yourself a raise.
That's right.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think part of this conversation really centers around what does our community want from its elected leaders? I love working on the council and working on the various things in the community, but I have to stop making money essentially to do so. And so to some degree, that, that limits the amount of time I'm physically, financially able to spend on council work, on volunteering on things in the community because I have to make money to live. And so to some degree, if we pay the council more, then that should give us the ability to do some more things in the community because financially, we're able to. Whereas, you know, where it sits now, I do as much as I can with the amount of time I can spend away from my job. And I expect that most of you all are in the same boat. So part of the conversation is, what does our community want from us? Do they want us to spend more time working on these issues? And if so, yes, you know, you're going to have to pay us more because we have to live too. So I think that's to be part of our discussion as we get down the road. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, Mr. Jensen, one of the
Well, Mr. Jensen, when I took this job, I knew it was part-time. And I think the citizens want part-time council members. You know, this discussion came up ever since 2005, that, you know, we should have full-time council members. And I would love to be a full-time council member with full-time pay, but that's not what the citizens voted for. And so I will honor their wish, I took that job under that understanding, and I have 19 NIAs, 15 to 19, so, you know, I totally understand.
Councilwoman Jensen, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Clear.
Thank you. And I do agree, you know, currently, we're set up as part-time council people. I think our community really wants us to be full-time, whether they have come out and said it or not, and just the amount of things that we could do if we were. Now, I'm not advocating for us to become full-time council people, I have a job I dearly love, but maybe three-quarters time or something along those lines.
Councilwoman Clear?
I think my constituents think I'm full-time. I mean, they may want part-time, but they get full-time. And I think because, I mean, you wouldn't be on this council if you weren't a helping person. Because we want to help and because we are there for people, we do it, full-time, most of us. I mean, if you add up the hours, it's full-time, some of us more than full-time. And I know it's a delicate subject, but if you're in a position at a job, you expect a raise, if you do a good job, you get a raise. So it's, I don't think my constituents are going to be upset about this, because it's just, I just think it's the right thing.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Ms. Clear, I do a good job, I work for the state of Kansas, and we haven't had a raise for eight years, not even a cost of living, with all due respect.
At this point in time, I would like to ask for the staff if it would be possible at all for us to have an evaluation for the next meeting of what other municipalities are doing, and if we could also address a CPI formula that is being utilized in other communities. That way, we could just come back to the body with further information on that. Also, with comparables of other municipalities of our MSA size, so that we could take a look at where we stand. Would the body would be amicable to that suggestion? Thank you, great discussion. City manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to clarify, so because this got brought up, this isn't in terms of a recommendation on my staff, because this got brought up, we understand that this has to be a discussion to the body, but that will ultimately result in an ordinance and an action taken by this body. We just didn't want to not have a financial consideration given to this early on. So we just wanted to include it in the budget, and we will proceed as you direct it.
Absolutely. This is the perfect time to have this discussion, because if it were to come up later on in the year, it would be kind of difficult to go ahead and work it into the numbers. Councilwoman Hillary?
Deputy Mayor, a question and a comment. The question is, are we going to go back through and go through these departmental budgets? Because we, as a council, haven't addressed our council budget yet. Will we do this later?
We will have a discussion today of the overview, and then we will go into details in the next two meetings.
Later, okay. The comments would be that I don't know that I've ever compared notes with everyone, but for us to think about that, and even staff in those other communities, I don't know what other costs are covered or provided by those cities. But many of us spend a lot of time driving around, buying our own tickets to all the things that our constituents want, making contributions here and there to various things. And I suspect that most of us spend all that money on this job, rather than, you know, live on it. And so that might be something for each of us to consider ourselves, as we consider what's reasonable about those dollars. I also did note that something we've talked about the last number of years, actually, is putting some training money in, so that at least we can all feel like we can do a good job and not have to spend our own money to go get some training. And that's not in here yet, so if that comes up later, I, it is? Oh, I couldn't, I looked for it.
We took that out of the budget. We had training and took it out.
Well, it's not there, it's only 1,500 bucks for the whole council.
Councilwoman Hillary, those points are very well taken. I think that at this point in time, unless we have any other questions with regards to this issue, we can proceed with the overview.
I know.
Ms. Lee?
Let's just clarify that real quick. On page 18, we did add $12,000 to council training, yeah.
Great.
So we can talk about that more later, but I guess the idea was to put enough in there that it'd be enough to cover several big trainings or a little bit for everybody, but that is built into the budget.
Thank you, I looked in the 2016 column. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so part of those full-time salaries, as I mentioned, were six new positions. And as we've explained and talked to a lot of you about, we're very, very conscientious and careful before any new positions are added to the budget, there's a very long vetting process. Where possible, we like to take existing positions and reallocate, so these are not, these don't get into the budget very easily. And we believe that the new positions that are in the budget really speak to council priorities or their items that really were contractually obligated to do. So the six positions that do relate to the general fund, two are in the technical services group in the Public Works Department, and that group, that's the group that does all of our GIS mapping and our asset management. For a very long time, they operated with four positions, they had a few scattered throughout the utilities. We're kind of putting a new focus on this group, because you've seen from a lot of the presentations we've made to you with maps, with the CIP, and with our assets, we can't get to where we want to be with our streets and our utilities and our overall asset management without the people there to do that. The good thing about these positions is that we actually spread the cost of these positions over all of the major departments and utilities. So the general fund share at this point's only actually 16% of these positions, water, stormwater, wastewater, really anybody that's impacted by the asset management and the mapping pays in to help pay for these positions. There are two new zookeepers built into the budget, and that is to continue to meet appropriate standards in zoo and animal care, and also in anticipation of the zoo master plan and future zoo expansion. We simply felt like it was time to expand the number of staff that we have in the zoo. And then additionally, there's two positions in fire, so for several years, you all probably have etched in your head, 245, 245, that's the number of people in the fire department. We are at the point right now where we believe we need to have a special focus on the medical care side of our fire department, since the majority of our calls are related to EMS, emergency medical-type positions. So we actually have an emergency medical services director built into the budget that will oversee those operations, and also a training officer that would assist that person in making sure that we're having good quality control, good training on all of the state requirements that our fire department needs to be trained in. So that concludes my comments about the full-time salaries. And what I'll do is I'll pause after each of these items to see what follow-up questions there are.
Does the body have any follow-up questions? Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last year, in looking back at the minutes and stuff, we, and I don't know if this is appropriate time for it, but I know that I added a grant writer or grant consultant that we did. So I'd like a report on the grant issues with the city. I don't know if, you know, that needs to be done at a later meeting, but we did add, what, 60,000 last year for grant writer. So I'd like kind of a report on that and where we're at with our grants and writing grants.
Sure. If you don't mind, we'll include that in the Q and A follow-up to this meeting. Thank you. And that is, that position is still in the budget.
Councilwoman Clear?
I don't know if this is the right time either, or wait till we get to the individual, but on the comp time callback pay for fire, did we, did we not address that in their contract, and we were really trying to lower that amount, but it has increased?
I can go ahead and speak to that item. Okay, so let's see, though. The fifth item down is related to callback, and you can see that increases 193,000. And just so you know what callback is, is that's used to meet minimum staffing. So if there's ever a situation where, in the fire department, for whatever reason, and this could be, someone is sick, someone's doing training, someone is out, that we need to meet minimum staffing, then we use what's called callback pay to make sure that we have the right employees in the positions where we need them to be. And it's been updated in the '17 budget to better match actuals. So we have been really under-budgeting this line, and I think to your point, with the goal of addressing callback and where possible, have our staffing to where it need to be, and have the situations where we need callback under control and kind of restricted where they need to be. And I'd say, at this point, we just realized that we've been under-budgeting that line, so it's time to simply bring it up to where it needs to be. So now, what you see it as reflects how much we've really been spending.
So how does the callback pay compare with pay? I mean, is it double time, time and a half? How does that compare?
I couldn't tell you that 100% off the top of my head, we can maybe.
Would there be a parking lot item, so that we could go ahead and come back to it and have the information? City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmember Clear. So we want to come back with this item and really kind of give an overview. We do believe it's one of the elephants in the room. Unfortunately, Chief Wayne has had a longstanding commitment for today and Wednesday that he's not able to participate. So we've, we're challenging him to come back and kind of give an overview of where we stand on many of these items. But your original question is right on, managing that is absolutely vital. The whole concept of overtime and callback and all that is one of the things that we need to address. Nikki had made a statement that this is where it needed to be, it's not where it needs to be, it's where it is. And so we wanted to recognize the reality of the financial situation is today, but we want to continue to address that going forward. But with your permission, we'll put it in the parking lot, but it really isn't a parking lot, it's a planned conversation to have a little bit.
And quickly, my handy audience back here did clarify, it is time and a half is the rate.
Well, if I may, I'm glad, I'll comment, I'm glad to see us increase that, because it's long overdue by nobody's fault, other than by statute, we have to have so many people on a truck, you know? And we can't control fires, we can't control if one staff comes in and another staff leaves, you know, or needs to leave, that they have to stay over. Just like when we had some of those big fires on the different sides of towns, they can't just walk off the job and leave, so I'm glad to see that we've increased this.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Emerson, Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Nikki, I just had a question, because I went through the book, well, most of the book last night, and maybe this is going to be on all these, but the number, so you have a comp time callback pay here of 545096, and in the book, when you go to the detail sheet, it doesn't, it's 496059, unless there's some other, maybe this is consolidating several numbers, I don't know. Is that going to be the case everywhere?
Yes, thank you. So I meant to clarify that from the start, is just kind of explain the setup of this page. So what you see in the 2017 budget column is the aggregate of every department throughout the book that's got that item. So like, for example, on this callback line, that's grabbing that account for every single department in the general fund that's got that. And then, as you go to the right, where you see the increase and the decrease, and then the column that labels who that's for, like, for example, on this one, it says fire. It may actually be that a small amount of that change is attributed to another department. I've simply put the department here that's responsible for the majority of it.
Okay.
And I'll try to explain that throughout where that happens, but you're right, you can't open necessarily to the fire department and see those same numbers, it's just they are the ones driving the biggest change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question.
Any other questions, comments from the body? You can move forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clear, we got another one, I can check that one off the list, just took care of two and one item. Okay, next, we go down to employer contribution for health insurance. As you can see in the general fund alone, this is at this point an $844,000 increase, 17 over 16. So this is one of the biggest impacts to our budget, of course, is the cost of our healthcare. And this is the amount that the city, so the employer contributes towards the plan. Of course, employees that are on the plan contribute as well. And at this point, we are budgeting for a 13.5% increase over 2016 actuals, which actuals were higher than the original budget. So what we do every year is we set the budget amount, but we don't actually get our renewal rates from all of our benefits and our benefit consultants until about July. And the reason is, they need to wait for as much history in the year as they possibly can before they're coming to us and saying what next year's rates are going to be. Well, we, of course, need to be setting that a lot earlier in the budget, so we know how much to set aside. So our budget amount is rarely what the actual amount is. And for example, in 2016, our rates came in a little bit higher than we'd originally budgeted. The main reasons for the increase that you see in 2017, one would be just simply the costs of healthcare, which any of you that deal with that, maybe in your businesses or personally, are pretty familiar with. This is something that's happening everybody, everywhere, especially on the prescription drug side, even generics, we're seeing costs of these are just skyrocketing. In addition, unfortunately, in 2015 and so far in 2016, we've had some very high claims years among our employees. And we will be diving into this a lot more on June 28th, that's the third budget committee meeting. We plan to focus on the health fund and any other funds. So we will give you a report, for example, on the wellness clinic and the impacts that's had. And we'll also talk a lot more about, we can dive as much into the healthcare as you all want to. At this point, we're hoping that we're being conservative and putting more in the budget than we need. We won't know for the next couple of months, but we'd rather put more than less. Additionally, one important item to note is that we will also be talking to you as a governing body pretty soon about where we are with our cost share negotiations with the union. So if you're not aware, we have a negotiating requirement with all the seven union groups and the staff sit together and decide what the cost share rates will be. So for example, this year, employees pay only 3% of their healthcare and the employer, so the city pays 97%. That's a negotiated item that we sit down with every year. And at this point, we haven't come to an agreement, so that's another unknown at this point that we're hoping to solidify pretty soon, but right now, we'd rather just assume higher than we think that we need.
Yes, Councilwoman Clear?
Can you tell me the number of employees that you contribute health insurance for?
I'm going to follow up with you on that exact number, only because we have a total number that includes some retirees and current employees. I know it's around 900, but I'm going to send you the final one. But on that note, something really important to know is that when we have vacancies, so for example, when we set the budget, we had about 50 vacancies, we do budget, because we have to assume that those people might be coming in on our plan. So we always know we're budgeting more than we're probably going to be spending, because you have to assume that everybody, all of those people will be on. But let me send you the exact amount, if that's okay.
Councilwoman Hillary?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for making commitment that this will come back on the 28th for more of a deep dive. When we do that, could we, I know there are lots of moving parts in this healthcare system that add into this number. We thought, those of us that have been on for a little while, that we were right on top of cost containment for healthcare, at least I did, and that the clinic process was supposed to plateau and then reduce our expenses, so we invested in that. I really am interested in that, how each of those moving parts are working, and we also thought it would make our, I know it's early in that long-term plan, but that we could reduce the incidence and the healthcare expenses for our employees overall. So I'm surprised to see it go up, and, you know, concerned, of course. Also, though, the 13.5%, if that could be recalibrated into what difference that means in terms of, I mean, if it's 97%, it's going to stay that way? I mean, like, 13.5% of $100 is 1350, but of 10 bucks is just a dollar and some change. So I'm not, you know, per employee, what does that 13.5% mean?
Mr. Gerber?
If I may, just for the body's reminder, the clinic, we do believe, is going to be a positive for our employees. But we have to keep in mind, whether it's the clinic or, you know, employees we added for Public Works last year, in both of those cases, we're very new into the process. The clinic is, has really not even been open for a year, hasn't been open for a year. And so, not to make any sort of grand promises, but I think it's very early to be seeing the sort of cost savings we might be expecting in the future. Additionally, I think anyone recognizes who's been through this, that when you have a clinic that opens up, one of the things that often happens is... a clinic that opens up, one of the things that often happens is people go and they find things that maybe they hadn't seen before. And so there is always the potential of an initial escalation in cost, which should plateau then, once it gets treated appropriately.
I'll go to Councilwoman Schwartz and then we'll come back to Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you Madam Chair. And I try, I was on that committee and really spearheaded a lot of this discussion to do the clinic and the HRAs, health risk assessments. I've seen this happen before with other employers and what happens, as Doug said, is the woodwork effect. You have people who have not really been getting healthcare, now getting healthcare. We also will be moving, and I've, you know, tracked with Jackie and Michelle and the entire committee as to when we will start doing the health risk assessment categories. And that's what Olathe and other cities that are using this, that's why they're saving lots of money. And those health risk assessment categories means that an employee, based on their health risk and their assessment, they are placed in a certain category. And then their goal is to, to improve, to, to have their health actually improve. So it's not that we just have a free clinic. We have a clinic that is helping people to improve their health. And I've been assured that probably next year, we're going to move into that aspect. And for people that improve their clinics, like Olathe that's doing this or Salina, they actually have bonuses for employees that improve. So you're watching your blood pressure, you're watching everything that needs to be done. So the first year is always expected to have a little bit of a woodwork effect, but we will move into, Olathe, I think, if I'm not incorrect Nikki, they get $6 back for every dollar they invest in their program.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And again, just a deep dive to understand that, whether it's, we've got a lot of people that we're retaining with major illnesses, or whether it's preventive care or attending to long-term things, just to understand. Also, you touched on something, I mean, if the 13 and a half percent is because we've added employees, that helps to explain it to me as well. I mean, whatever that really means is what I was asking.
Any additional comments from the body or questions? Okay, we can proceed.
Okay. The third item on here is employer retirement reserve contribution. There's a little bit of discussion about this in the budget book. So what that is, is that we have a designated fund set up to handle payouts when employees retire. So we have, with our personnel code, it designates when an employee retires, how much we pay of the vacation time, how we pay out comp time. And as you can imagine, sometimes with long-term employees, just like any government entity, they build up, they can potentially build up an impact that would be a big impact on the budget in one given year. So the way that we handle that is actually, for every dollar that we pay towards an employer, towards an employee's pay, their whole career with the city, we're actually, as a city, contributing a percentage of that pay into this fund to plan for the future. So for a non-KPNF employee, we pay 2.25% on every dollar we kick into a retirement reserve fund to be able to help pay for that employee's future costs. We pay a little bit more on the KPNF side, it's 2.75% because, simply because they have larger payouts when they retire. We increase to those percentages I just stated this year because we will be expending through the employee separation fund. For those of you that were here in 2013, we were coming up to a large bubble of employee retirements. And at that point, our funds were all in some pretty terrible situations where we knew that we couldn't handle the, the cost that they would have on our budget. So we actually took out bonds to finance for the next couple of years of retirements. That was in 2013. We're expecting to have paid through that in 16. So we've had a very, very large group of retirees that we will run through that fund. It is our goal, we never want to borrow money again to pay for retirements. That's, it's allowable, but it's, it's not a practice that you would like to continue. So in order to prepare for that and to prevent for that, we needed to increase the amount that we were paying for ourselves for these future payouts. So what that impacts in this budget is $400,000 increase over last year. This is simply good financial planning. This, this needs to happen, so we're not in the position in future years.
Mr. Emerson.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Nikki, on that, is there, I guess, are there other implications to that? I know for capers, what is it, your last two years or something determined, is there, is there some, I guess, is there some gains going on there that if you keep that, does that count then and you can up up retirement and everything? Is there an impact other than just that year's money? I mean, should this be things we're paying out every year to people and cashing out every year?
Okay, if I'm understanding your question, this is actually, this money is money that we're putting into our own fund. So we are transferring it from whatever fund that employee's paid out of, for example, the general fund, into the retirement reserve fund. And then, once they get whatever payout it is, per the personnel code, it's paid out of that fund. So I think to the employee, they don't know what fund they're getting paid out of, and there's really no way that can be manipulated. They're making that money no matter where we're paying it from. I don't know if that answers, if that makes sense.
I just didn't know, why don't we just, ever, at the end of every year, if you have 30 days accrued, why don't we just pay everybody that money? Is there a reason we don't do that instead of having this kind of unbudgeted amount hanging out here that we don't know from year to year?
Deputy City Manager.
Deputy Mayor, thank you Councilman. Certainly, some cities do approach those future liabilities that way. And they have policies whereby, at the end of every year, you get a portion of your vacation or a portion of your sick leave without leaving yourself vulnerable for the next year in case you need to have vacation or sick leave that you can use. That's certainly a policy and a philosophy. The philosophy in the city of Topeka is that we fund from our operating budget towards those future liabilities. And as Nikki said, we're, we're trying to bolster that fund so that we don't put ourselves in a precarious situation in the future. So, but it's certainly a possibility, it's just not the way Topeka has traditionally approached Nikki's whispering a good point in my ear. We, we do, in terms of both contractual obligations and the personnel code, there are maximum limits set on both vacation and sick leave, so that also helps mitigate that risk a little bit.
Okay.
One more clarification, capers is the final three years rather than the final two years.
And do amounts, do these amounts go into that calculation?
No. Councilman, which, which amounts, I'm understanding you-
So if you get, if you have $100,000 saved up in these, and I don't know what the amounts are, I don't know what kind of amounts you're talking about for employee, but does that then go into your retirement? Or is that not considered?
Mayor will guess.
I think the, the issue, because we call this retirement, we're thinking that this is part of your capers, of your retirement you get for the rest of your life. But that's not what this is, correct?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe the confusion is even the title. It's kind of like our future liability reserve. This is for the city to save up money for those payouts that we make on those employees. So it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with the calculations of their retirees.
Okay, okay.
Right?
It's a payout for your unused sick leave.
Yeah.
Is it?
Maybe I can try to clarify this. The money that's in this retirement fund and previously the, I'm not sure what we called it, but the other fund that we took out bonds for is in case we have, and in fact, when we do have, employees that retire across the city, so that we're able to fund their benefits due to them that they've earned at retirement, whether it's sick leave, whether it's vacation, whether it's their final payout.
That's it.
There's a number of factors that go into it. And that's what those monies are used for. That way, it doesn't come out of individual departments' operating budget and impact routine operations.
Any, Mr. City Manager.
Just to clarify, you asked a question right at the end, does, does that payout count towards the capers retirement amount? The answer is yes, it does. Capers, capers takes the average of the last three years of your salary. And if you were to have a, a pension spike, you had, that number was very high, but you said $100,000. But if you were to get certain payouts, that would be included into the final numbers.
Wow.
Councilwoman Clear.
So not to jump ahead, but then the next one's the sick and vacation. Is that not, is that just for when people are sick and vacation, it has nothing to do with when they leave?
Yeah, so then, this is, this is good, you're tying this all together for me. Thank you. This next one that you see here, this really doesn't have anything to do with any of those. This really is an accounting entry that we're getting away from, per the change to how we're budgeting for items. This was simply an accrual that we used to budget for, so you could see in the 16 budget, it was like a negative 300,000. And that had to do with an internal accounting entry that we make for liabilities of people's accrued sick and vacation time. It's not a payout, it's simply an entry that really, we won't be really showing on the budget side anymore. So that's really a technicality. But it may look like it's related, but really it's not.
Any other questions from the body? Seeing none.
Thank you. Callback, we touched on that. Comp training, so this line here looks to be an $89,000 increase. And what this is, is that per some of our contracts, we actually have employees that get compensated for having certain level of degrees, so an associate, a bachelor's and master's degree. This is not new, we're simply accounting for it differently to be more transparent. It used to be, this was just included in their full-time salary calculation, we would just add it in with what that person's making because that's, you know, it's part of their paycheck. But in order to make it more visible, how much we do pay out on items like that, we've designated it into its own account. So year over year, like I said, it looks like it might be an increase over 16, but actually, it's the same rates. It's just we're simply counting for it in a different way. As is stated here, this is in the municipal court and police because it's in the FOP contract, and then also fire due to IAFF.
Did I see that was in municipal too?
Yes, so we actually have a municipal court, we have public safety officers, those are the ones that run our security, and they are part of the FOP contract.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering why it was there.
Any other questions?
Okay, okay. And then the last one on this list is the capers contribution. So capers rate are provided to us by the state, and this is their rates that they're set, that they set for what we need to contribute for every employee. So just like with the retirement reserve, you're probably all familiar with, every dollar that we pay an employee, we also contribute towards capers. Actually, the actual rate is going down from 9.18% in 16 to 8.97% in 17. So the rate itself is going down, but we're actually paying more into the fund because as we have an increased full-time salaries, we're going to be paying more in our capers contribution.
Questions on that? Okay.
Okay, I did not mean to, but I'm sorry, I skipped over overtime, is that what you're going to say? Okay. Overtime, so the overtime line increases by 75,000 in this budget, and again, that's all departments combined. The majority of this is, you will find in the police department, a lot of this is because as we're paying employees more, they're actually, since their rate is higher, they're making more in overtime. But also on the police side, there's multiple kind of compensation accounts for different types of overtime. To you, it might seem like overtime, but technically, there's differences. There's overtime, there's standby, there's callback, there's multiple different categories for when an employee works more than their normal shift. So actually, in TPD, they decreased a couple of those other items. So overall, their items aren't increasing by this much, but the specific item tied to overtime does increase by this amount.
Councilwoman Clear.
Is any of this overtime due to not being up to staff, being undermanned in TPD?
With your permission. Yes, City Manager, just bringing up Chief Brown. Welcome Chief Brown.
Thank you ma'am. Councilmember Clear, so in the overtime for police, that $75,000, we did completely away with the hazardous duty pay, and we decreased our standby pay. So this is not an increase that we're asking from the governing body. This has just taken our hazardous duty pay and our standby pay and moving it to, to overtime. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Does any of this affect our special units, when we put together special units for, you know, like the gangs or different, does any of that affect this?
Yes, so during contract negotiations, we decided as a police department that that, for example, hazardous duty pay. We would rather see the money be utilized, for example, a month ago when we had three officers shot during that warrant, and then the subsequent fire of the hotel, that was a large amount of overtime-
Exactly.
-that night for that one event. And to be able to forecast those type of events, we have to be prepared for those type of events. But they consume a lot of manpower and a lot of dollars for that one specific event.
And so this is what helps on that, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wondered how that worked because, excuse me, within the last year, we've had a lot, you know, with Hi-Cres, with the shooting out there. Continually, we're, we're still out there with special units, with the gang shootings and stuff like that. So I'm glad to see this then.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much Chief Brown.
Thank you. All right, the next section, we get down into really what we call as our contractual items. So this, the contractual category does serve as a little bit of a catch-all for a lot of our kind of expenditures. It's things that we're paying to outside agencies, things that we're paying to ourselves. So really, other, everything other than people or stuff falls into the contractual category. So on the top of the list there is our own contributions to our internal service fund IT. So just as a little bit of a background, and there's more information in the book about how we fund our IT department, but our IT department is set up as an internal service. So we actually charge ourselves based on the department's number of employees, number of computers, and all of the other technical support that they have. Every year, we annually reconfigure how much all of those departments need to pay in to our own IT fund for the support. And the IT fund increases, as you can see, over the 16 budget increases 307,000. This is not, this does not mean that we're increasing our IT operations by that amount. What this is reflecting is that we've actually reallocated in an appropriate way where those charges are occurring. So for the past couple of years, we have been charging other funds, so the utility fund, street fund, more than really was there due to be able to protect the general fund. And we're at the point right now where we're, overall in the budget you'll see in for the past couple of years, we're wanting to shift everything more appropriately. We no longer want to be charging other funds less or more than they should be paying, it needs to be based on a formula. So actually, this is bringing us to the point that we should be. Additionally, they did have a small increase to their budget of just a 2% to be able to keep up with some increasing costs. But in the general fund, this is kind of a, a large impact in one year. Future years, this should be a smaller amount because we made a pretty large shift in just this one year.
Councilwoman Clear.
So you put shifted from other funds, so the other funds went down, decreased?
Yep, so for example, if I go to the water department IT fee, you'll see a pretty significant decrease from 16 to 17 because it was, they had been paying more than their share to protect some of the general fund departments.
So what is the actual increase? Because if you shift from here and put it here, does it balance or is there really an increase?
Sure, so overall, the IT fund did increase by 2% over the prior year.
Oh, I see, overall fees?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
We've been, thank you. We've been adding a lot of features to some software that we already had and have been adding others, such as the budget portal and, and so on. Are all of those software expenses, installation and maintenance expenses in IT, or are some of them still in departments?
Okay, I can clarify that. So generally, it depends. I would say if we have department-specific softwares, usually departments are actually paying for those items. For example, Socrata, we are actually paying for out-of-finance- For example, Socrata, we are actually paying for out-of-finance, because it's for the open checkbook portion and the portions related to performance, that would be more of a finance-related. Additionally, the expenses for Lawson, which is our ERP, our enterprise research support programming, we actually pay the majority of that annual fee out of the general fund. So the IT fund pays for kind of the software, the security, the website, so the kinds of supports that, the kinds of items that affect the whole city, that would include the IT staff as well. But anytime there's a software that's department-specific, that will usually be paid by that specific department.
Mr. Gerber.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. I want to pick up on a point Nikki mentioned in terms of shifting IT costs appropriately. It's a good story. For one thing, it's a best practice, and it's something we should be doing. We've done a cost allocation model, and I think that's very appropriate. But secondly, I think maybe an even more important point is, as we move into a potential conversation about rates for our utilities, I think it's beneficial if we're not using the utilities as a cash cow for the general fund, but instead, making sure that they're absorbing the costs that they're supposed to absorb, and not other costs, just because it was an easy budgeting practice at one point.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions with regards to this line item? Okay, we proceed.
So that leads us very nicely into server licenses. This is actually the support for our Lawson annual maintenance. We are actually doing an upgrade right now as we speak, hopefully, it's going well, it's literally happening right now. And the costs from 2017 over '16 are actually increasing by more than a usual annual increase amount, because we are going to the cloud, so it will now be hosted by a Lawson, rather than by ourselves. So there's probably a lot more technical behind that, but in the long run, this should mean that we have less of the support on that end from our own funds, but it does increase our annual costs.
Mr. Emerson.
I think Mr. Jensen maybe was, no.
Nope, nope.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is this gonna be this much in perpetuity? I mean, or is this a one-time?
Let me follow up. I know we have, I think we have a five-year rates from them, and I believe that the first couple of years are larger jumps, and then afterwards, we should see smaller, but if you don't mind, let me send that to you for sure, rather than assuming right now.
And I guess the hope is, we now will need less hardware, we'll need less, so...
Less energy, a whole nine yards.
Yes. Yeah, would you mind if I follow up with some?
Absolutely.